Thank you for joining the Pasco School Board of Directors this afternoon for our study session. It's on Strategy 360 Communications Audit and we will have Ms. Leslie Rogers here to present. This, all of our study sessions are public meeting, open public meetings and they are broadcast on the school district's YouTube page and on Charter Cable TV Channel 191.
Great, thank you Board members, thank you for having me here today, I appreciate it. As mentioned, I'm Leslie Rogers and I'm the Senior Vice President for Education at Strategies 360. See how I move this forward? Got that?
Yeah. So, I think you can just click on this.
There we go, thank you. So, we are a public affairs firm, based in Seattle, we've got 12 states in the west and Washington DC. And I started at the firm 10 years ago and took three and a half years off to serve as the Seattle Public Schools Chief Communications Officer. As I've mentioned to some of you, three and a half years, I had three different superintendents. So, I saw a lot of ups and downs during my tenure there and right now primarily my work is with school districts that are looking to improve overall public perception. School districts, as we know, have a difficult time. Your main job is educating students, but we all know that running a school district, there are politics, there's communications, there's engagement and so how do we elevate that conversation and talk about really authentically communicating with all audiences? So, that includes staff, that includes parents, that includes folks in the community who aren't connected to the school in any way, perhaps senior citizens or parents of preschoolers, business community. Really finding ways to make sure that they know the good work that's going on and really kind of create that drumbeat of good news stories and success and really being able to tell the story of Pasco School District to all the audiences and ultimately sort of move that needle on public opinion and public perception. Whoops, I did it again. Okay, next. So, just a little bit more of an overview about what our firm does. We do a lot of communication strategy and outreach, research, communications audits, media relations, creative design, as well as crisis communications. We work with some districts when they're going through some major issues. I'm sorry, this is just, there we go, thank you. So, we started working with the Pasco School District in August and our first step was to conduct research to gauge public opinion. So, really talking with folks in Pasco, we made sure to get a pretty diverse group of people and listening to them about what they're talking about, what their opinions are. We really wanted to get a benchmark of where you are as a district. And then we conducted an assessment of the district's communications and engagement program. So, it's a communications audit, which is really a snapshot of how are you communicating? What tools do you have in place? What are your main audiences? Do you have the right tools and tactics to reach those audiences? And if not, where are the gaps? We do this work a lot with districts and it's really vital to know, you know, you think that you're, a lot of districts think, "Well, we're saying the same thing over and over and over all the time." Yeah, but if people aren't hearing it, you've got to change how you're communicating. So, we looked at that. We also reviewed media coverage and then finally what I'm going to talk to you about today is the Strategic Communications and Engagement Plan that we worked on with the district. And what this is, is really a 12 to 18 month plan, looking at what we heard, looking at the audit findings and then coming up with how do we reach certain audiences and with what messages and with what tools? So, what do we need to do over the next year, year and a half to really move that needle on public opinion? And here's what we found. So, research showed that definitely some negative feelings linger. I know that the strike keeps being brought back up in the media and we just kind of keep hearing about it and people still are feeling a little negative about it. However, we also saw a lot of optimism. There was good feelings about the superintendent and sort of that feeling of there's a new day in Pasco. We also heard that people were concerned about customer service, maybe a little bit of a disconnect between what the district is saying and what schools are saying and I have to say that that's pretty common. We hear that in districts quite a bit. It's difficult, it's difficult to communicate from when you've got several sites and as well as one central office, finding ways to streamline that. There was definitely also a need for more authentic communications and community engagement. So, finding ways to listen is really important, finding ways for that two-way communication is vital and it's definitely something that the district needs to do moving forward. And also, we know that there is a bond measure on the February ballot and from our initial perception, that people were pretty unclear about the overcrowding needs and what that would mean for the community. And feel free to interrupt me, I know we've got time to ask questions, but if you have a question while I'm going through this, please feel free to interrupt me anytime. In the audit, we found that most people get their district news and information from school newsletters and flyers, as well as word of mouth. And so, that word of mouth is often principals, teachers, school staff, they're getting their news and information that way. People did say that they would like to get information more from social media, that they'd like sort of those little updates, good news stories, more digestible, shorter pieces of news and information. People, again frustrated by perceived confusion or lack of communication, they, I had talked to several people who said they would get one thing from the district and then they would get a different kind of information from schools. So, that's something that can be streamlined for sure. The website is difficult to navigate, search function very difficult. So, finding ways to get people information quickly and ways that they can find online is important. And overall, in our audit, we looked at materials and given today's climate, especially with parents, they're busy, they get a lot of emails, some people said that they would like to get text messages, people were very excited about the app, the mobile app, so that's definitely a win. But making sure overall that materials are shorter, more visually interesting, more readable, just easier to digest, you know, getting those like little nuggets of information out in a way that people can say like, "Okay, I know what's going on at my school" or, "Oh, wow, I didn't know this." Just ways that they can share that information and easily repeat it is important. So, some of our high level recommendations on the audit, improving the website function, this is something that, and I give some examples of some school district websites that I know we really like, you know, hiring someone to oversee that work or just sort of stripping it down, finding new ways to house information, you've got the app, you've got social media. I think working with a vendor to make the content just more searchable is going to be really important. Using videos to share stories and successes, this is a great opportunity, people really relate to videos, they like them, if they're short, you know, less than two minutes, easy, mobile friendly. I think what I'd love to see Pasco doing over the next year, year and a half is just sharing those moments of pride that we see in schools. You know, when you're in classrooms and you see something, when you're at an event and you see something, getting people to recognize and share those successes is so important and it really is a way to connect people who can't be at a school to seeing the great work that students are doing. Because communications at a school district should be all at the heart about what students are doing. You're gonna, you're gonna win people's hearts every time when you're talking about students. And so, finding ways to really show those visual moments, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a great win, I believe, for Pasco, because you've got them out there. And, you know, some people love social media, some people hate it, but people we talked to said that they'd like to see more of it. They've said that they would like to, if their, you know, if their child is in elementary school, they'd like to get their information on kind of a secure Facebook page for that elementary school, they'd like to get those like little quippy things that we see in our feeds, they want information that way. On customer service, we did hear this a lot, I know that the superintendent has started some great work on this Yes, Ann initiative and I think that's great, it's definitely a step in the right direction. Customer service starts at the top and really making sure people, when they're answering phones, emails, that they know that they are in service to the community to do that work is so important. And the superintendent's done a great start on that. I do believe that hiring designated ombudsmen to help parents navigate the district, this is a pretty decent sized district and a lot of times parents can get frustrated and not know who to turn to if they've got a conflict or a question about special education. If you've got someone in that position, it can also alleviate some of that work from, letting the principals, you know, focus on their job as well and kind of having someone take that and navigate the parent through the system. I think it's, it's something that we've seen work really well in other districts and I think it's something that Pasco should consider. On materials, I talked a little bit about this, using more videos, short, sort of creating, I believe, I believe Pasco needs sort of a brand and right now I'm not, it doesn't come through on the website and some of the materials. I think just some fresh energy in some of the communications materials, you've got a great opportunity, again with a new superintendent who's out and going out, so finding ways to showcase that and visualize what students are doing. And we also saw that some of the materials, you know, sort of one-off, a department will do a brochure or another school will put together something, so really best practice when you're looking at consistency of materials is making sure that things are funneled through the communications department and that they know that when the media is called, there's sort of that single one shop for all media communications and that type of material as well. And that's, those were the sort of the high level of the communications audit. As far as the strategic communications and engagement plan, part of the plan really is looking at messaging, is this is, this is what are all the spokespeople saying about the district? And looking at your strategic plan, the work that you've done, these are the key messages that really resonate and came through about what the district is saying. And so, what I would like to see moving forward is that the district takes these messages and all of you take these messages and when you're out talking to people, when you're, you know, when you're writing to your connections, you're making a presentation maybe to the Rotary or in materials such as a back-to-school letter, these are the messages that really people should understand and know. And they might change a little bit each year with a different theme, but really what you want people to know is this at the core of it. And we also looked at street facilities messaging too. Our students need classroom space to learn, Pasco schools are overcrowded and needing a safe space to learn. And I know that you've got the bond measure coming up in February and I think having sort of short, basic messages about where you are, about facilities and having everyone on the same page will help in the short timeframe that you have moving forward. And this is something that, that materials should be reflecting and really when you're looking at all the different tools, so from social media to videos and so on, having unified messaging is really, really helpful. And then using those, the messaging that we talked about, sort of the overall district messaging, as well as facilities messaging, the district really needs to work on connecting with all audiences. And some of our recommendations from the Communications and Engagement Plan include, one would be creating an event, such as a State of Our Schools or State of Our District event, that could be an opportunity to connect with folks who maybe don't have kids in the district, but are key business leaders or other elected officials and letting them know about, you know, here's where we've been the last year, here's where we're going, here are our goals. And the idea would be to make this sort of an annual event, so people know to expect it and they, you want them to walk away knowing, "Wow, you know, Pasco schools are doing some amazing things." You know, they go back to work and say, "Did you know that they're, you know, meeting this goal, that they've got this many kids and this, these many advanced classes?" You want to give them sort of those nuggets of success to go back and talk about and be excited about. The goal would be to have these sort of events in place too, so that when you do have an ask, it's not the first time that you're going before them, that you've got sort of this base in place of an event like this. And, you know, we definitely saw that there is pride in Pasco, I think that's something that's really unique to Pasco. Even people who were critical of the district talk about having pride in the schools and I think that's something that's amazing and that we don't see in every school district. And so, there are ways to really build upon that pride, using social media is a great way, again, getting people to talk about the successes in classrooms and what kids are doing. I know some of these recommendations, Superintendent Whitney, we suggested that she consider using Twitter to connect with audiences, I know she started doing that. A lot of superintendents are sort of finding their own voice on social media, it's a great way to connect with people who are online. We know a lot of media are on Twitter and just finding different audiences and ways to share the good news about Pasco. And also, we'll talk a little bit more about board members and that opportunity, but you are all connectors in your various communities and it would be my goal in this year, year and a half plan, to find ways to make sure that the board is able to use your own connections and start talking about some of these messages, some of the good news and finding ways to make sure that you have the information you need, as well as leveraging your communities. I would imagine some of you are connected, maybe a certain Rotary or maybe different civic clubs or churches and making sure that, you know, we're really getting you into schools and you're able to talk about some of these great successes because you're, like I said, you're connectors out there and finding ways to help you talk to people about the great work, I think would be really helpful as Pasco sort of moves into this new day. A focus on internal communications is also really important. Like I said, teachers and principals, school staff, they're some of the best messengers, especially when it comes to something like facilities communications, you really want to make sure that they know the statistics, they need to know why schools are overcrowded, what the bond recommendation is, what it means. And also your strategic plan, making sure that they understand what the, what the main goals are, because you want them to be able to answer questions from parents who might have questions about those topics or any hot topics that are in the news. We often work with districts that are going through a crisis situation and one thing we always say is take care of your internal communications first. So, if you've got a crisis, you know, making sure, "Hey, you're gonna see this on the news later, here's what happened, here's what we're saying, here are our talking points" and making sure that folks are really kept in the loop and that, again, it goes back to that, the district's communicating, school's communicating, and if you're doing really strong internal communications, it should feel very cohesive. Also, the Strategic Communications and Engagement Plan really looks at audiences and breaking down communications tools by audience. And we know that parents are in schools and they are supporters of schools, because they're in schools and they see the good work happening, but how do you bring in folks like senior citizens and parents of preschoolers and other groups into schools to see that work? So, some of our recommendations are finding volunteer opportunities in the community and really going to where people are, rather than asking them to come to you. We see that, you know, people are busy and so how do you, maybe there's a standing meeting in a certain place, so maybe instead of having a community town hall type meeting at the district office, going to a school or going to an existing meeting and talking about school issues, asking to be on their calendar. We find that those opportunities are authentic and you're meeting with a group that's already gathered, which is also helpful. Again, as I said, board members really play a key role in moving the district forward. The superintendent obviously is leading this work, but it's gonna take everyone, I believe, to move, move that needle on public perception. So, some examples, the school board could send a holiday letter to staff from the board. The school board could look at schools and make sure that each school in the district gets a visit from a board member at least once a year. Finding ways to just really connect with staff, I think it's, it's nice for them to know that board members are, you know, what work you're doing as well. And one, one good thing too, is just really taking the time to map out where your connections are. So, sitting down and saying, "Well, you know, here's sort of the people I know and the meetings that I go to and the groups that I am connected with." And sort of mapping it out, seeing if there are gaps at the school board level too and like, "Well, hey, does the school board ever connect with, you know, those elected officials and, you know, should we set up a coffee, someone have coffee there or go to this civic organization and ask to speak there?" So, really kind of thinking at a strategic level about school board outreach and the work that you're doing. I know you're doing a lot of this already and you go to a lot of meetings, so it's just, again, taking the time that, to kind of be efficient with your time and if there are meetings that you're already going to or connections that you already have, finding ways to use those to talk about the messages that we outlined and some of the good work that the district is doing. So, next steps, as the district moves forward on recommendations, our goals overall are to improve customer service, strengthen communications and really find ways to increase transparency and that authentic two-way communications. This is really important, you know, like I said before, everyone's busy, people want to, you know, if you're gonna ask them for their opinion, they want to be heard and have it be in an authentic way. And really ensuring all audiences that we talked about understand the goals of the district. So, understand the plan moving forward, understand the challenges, understand the great news and understand facility needs. And then ultimately, you know, it takes time, we all know it does, but moving that needle on public opinion and having people, when they think about the school district, you know, a lot of people love their school, but when they think about the district overall, that they understand the decisions that are made, they understand the good news that's happening, they understand the work that everyone's doing on behalf of students and kids. And so, that would be, that would be sort of that ultimate goal moving forward. And I am happy to talk more, I know I kind of breezed through all this, it's been several, several months of work condensed into 15 or so slides, so I'm happy to dive deeper into some of these recommendations or what we found.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. I wonder if you can comment on finding a balance between being positive with overcrowding and the effects of that and, but also addressing the issues that need to be addressed so people have an understanding of that. I think one of the challenges we face is it's become so norm in our community that we're just kind of all, everyone's accepted that this is just something we deal with when in reality, it's really adversely affecting our students in many ways. For example, you know, many of our elementary schools have 800 students, they have one counselor and the typical caseload for counselor should be about 300 students, providing music and art. For 800 students is suddenly very difficult, they make it work, everyone does their best, but, but those are real challenges that affect the experience that our students are getting in the schools and yet it's kind of the norm now.
Right.
Almost all of our schools have portables, we have, all of these challenges that we've kind of accepted as, "Well, that's just how it is now, because we're so overcrowded and behind all this growth." And so, I'm wondering if you can comment on that as far as perception and addressing, helping everyone realize the effects of overcrowding and other struggles that we have, while still being positive, but realizing like, "This is really not ideal and we're missing out on a lot of things and really impairing the experience of our students because of these types of effects."
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, because, you know, in communications, you tend to not want to air your dirty laundry, I mean, we're talking about moving the needle on public perception and you don't want to say, "Well, gosh, our schools are so overcrowded." But at the same point, you have to say that your schools are overcrowded if you want to fix that. So, I think it's a real credit to staff and that would be kind of how I would start talking about it and the staff's done a great job with the portables, with having to split time between schools or having a, you know, caseload of double the amount of kids. And what I would do is just start talking, showing in a visual way what the need is. So, you know, if you've grown by 600 students every year, that's a new elementary school every year, when's the last time you built a new elementary school? And just really finding ways to visualize what that overcrowding is, whether it's through videos or using, you know, materials to just really showcase what it should, what the ideal would be, I guess. And also just making sure that the, you know, parents are brought in as part of the solution, that they should be at, you know, part of a facilities task force, they should look at, I think, once, once, I mean, you explained it really well, and once they hear that and they say, "Oh, gosh, well, we could have this and we should have this and we're proud of our schools and this is what we need to fight for and this is what we need." I think having people at the table, looking at those and making recommendations on long-term facilities moving forward, it'd be kind of how I would start that conversation.
I would love this report, I'd also love the data that you got from the survey, could we get that?
Absolutely.
Could we get that email to us?
Yep, I've got that.
Great, thank you.
Posting or sharing this type of report with the community would be right on the same track, obviously, of communication and sharing what was found and that would start that perception. Do you know if any of our local school districts or in our region have an ombudsman, or is it more of a West Side thing? I'm just curious, I know you probably haven't worked with all these districts, but just, do you know off the top of your head?
You know, I would have to, I would have to check statewide how many do. The ones that I've worked with that have, it's been a really useful position and it really, it's, you know, it's gotta be the right person too, who really understands the system and can, can kind of walk someone through it. I don't know Superintendent, if you have, I know you've talked to some folks, but I can, I can do a little more research and find out, but I think it's, I think it would be a real positive. I know it's difficult to add staff, but I think this is somewhere that parents would see a direct benefit, especially if this person were also helping lead a lot of the customer service training.
So, Superin, or, excuse me, I'm the superintendent, you're the school board president. School Board President Learman asked this fall that district staff start to explore the concept of a district ombudsman. And I did do a fairly significant internet research and was actually surprised at the number of districts that had them and districts even that were smaller than Pasco and then obviously districts that were larger. I had a very extensive conversation with the ombudsman from Seattle Public Schools in terms of the, the range of duties and essential functions that that particular position did. So, we've, as a district, been exploring the concept since the fall and then it also came up as a suggestion in this particular audit. So, certainly a concept that we've been exploring.
I appreciate all that you said, that's something that we learned from our school board conference that we just went to, that, you know, this is the age of Twitter, this is the age of, you know, just social media messaging and, and our kids use these all the time and we need to utilize these in our classrooms and in, in our district and it can be really valuable. So, I, I hope we definitely, you know, I'm definitely pushed that we go more in these directions and, and even get our principals on board with, you know, positive messaging and, and for each of their schools, especially the secondary, at the secondary levels when, when kids are really active in social media. So, thank you. There's a lot of things in here that, that I 100% agree with as a parent, so it's, it's things that hopefully that we can overcome and, and make better. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Yeah, people really want and they expect now to get news and information quickly, so waiting for it to come home and, you know, kid mail, Wednesday envelope, it's, it's just a little bit, it's not, it's not our norm, people tend to throw away papers, so, and you have to communicate at all different points too. So, it would be using Twitter and Facebook and a blast email and the app and probably a text message and finding different ways and a video that might be shared on other people's social media, so, yeah, I, I appreciate. So, yeah, I, I appreciate that. It's really finding, using all the tools together in, in ways to reach people.
So when we have, being able to share all this information about students, do they have, do we have something from right in the beginning, Superintendent, about being able, for students, being able to use their information so we can use it immediately, their, their pictures, or whatever? That stuff, or, or just the ones that can't?
Sure, so they, we do an opt-out function in the fall, and so we have that information pretty readily available, so that we can participate. So for example, we've launched the Pride of Pasco campaign. I don't know if some of you may have seen our first Pride of Pasco post, was about a, a staff member who helped some cheerleaders from another district during a Good Samaritan Act during a, a car accident. There'll be another one that is of a student with one of our principals, with a sign that says, I want to be a principal one day. So like, that student was very easily identifiable as one that could be posted online. And we get that information very early in the fall, so it shouldn't be a challenge or a barrier for us.
And we only have to opt-out kids that, it's an opt-out policy rather than an opt-in policy, correct?
Right, that it's an opt-out form.
Okay.
That's an interesting point, and several, several of us up here, two, three of us, at our recent state conference for school board directors, went to a presentation where they were talking about building your online community, building your information community, and they were talking about YouTube and Facebook, and, and he was saying, a lot of districts that I talked to, right off the bat, they say, well, how are we going to get around these, these rules, you know, about posting pictures of kids and stuff like that? And he was saying that most of the successful districts, I think, when they have an opt-out policy, the building, the building administration and the teachers are aware of the students that can't have images put online, and, and they watch it at the building level, so that was interesting. But I, I do like the ombuds, and personally, I like the ombudsman idea, and we, we can talk about it further as a board. We were letting, I was letting Ms. Whitney do some research, and, and the research she's shared so far, I think, could be, could be good for Pasco, and appreciate the work you've done, Ms. Rogers, and looking forward. Each, each board member here today and tomorrow is going to meet individually with Ms. Rogers and, and talk about concerns and questions, further questions. So appreciate the work you've done. And I do have a question about, just what we were talking about there, this presentation on building, building your YouTube, building your Facebook, and getting, building your own community by what he said kind of was loosening the reins and letting, letting students post videos of themselves doing classroom work, or doing robotics, or doing Lego competitions or band and stuff like that. Do you have any advice to the district or to the board on, on how to make that go off, but still keep it family-friendly, keep the content where we want to keep it going in a positive direction?
Yeah, I mean, I think using, using, keeping a very specific focus around what's posted, such as the hashtag Proud of Pasco, so you've got a theme, and that only things that, videos or posts that really fall into what you're setting up as the theme go in there. So, you know, it couldn't just be a one-off of kids, you know, blowing something up on a, at a science, you know, something, it's got to be something that, that should, that, that fits into that theme, and that hopefully that a principal or a teacher is also writing with them, okay, like, well, why, why are we proud of what we just did? And can we write about that? And what do we want to share? And so using that as a moment to teach kids about communications as well. So how are we presenting this work that we did, and why are we proud of it? And so really branding it, using hashtags, and being thoughtful about the work that's being done. I definitely think that student work is amazing, and finding ways to highlight it on the website, if, you know, highlighting the great work that student journalists do, finding ways to really bring the work that students are doing, because I think folks who are not connected to schools, I think they're more likely to watch a, a student-produced video or something that students are doing, versus sort of that talking head, district person saying great things about the school. Let's let, let the students shine and, and do what they do.
That's what we were told, too. They, they said, you know, you can, you can get a video made for about $1,000, and, and a great job, but the most powerful videos that you get are from kids, and, and a lot of times you can incorporate it as part of your classroom, and, and it's free, and it's, and they're made by students, and they are sometimes much more powerful. So I think it's a great way to incorporate, you know, those videos are something that would be nice to do a lot more of.
Yeah, absolutely, and kids are doing them anyway.
Yeah.
Even, even outside of classrooms.
I know, and even just like having a competition, hey, you know?
Yeah.
Do the best video for Enterprise Week, you know? I just think kids could be, could be instrumental in some of these things.
Absolutely.
I had a similar, similar question along those lines. I was inspired as well at our conference about letting students take more of a lead in this, and as a parent, what I'm obviously most interested in is what's happening in my children's classroom, right? So that would be like my number one desire to have information on, and since they're, right now, my four oldest children are at the same school, then I, I want to know what's going on at their school. And then last would be the district and other schools, so, but that's, I think the fear or the worry is that, well, who's going to, who's going to manage this? Who's going to monitor it? Who's going to, are we going to hire someone to do that, or add this to the principal and all the principals? No, no. You know, who's going to take the time to, to construct and, and monitor this type of thing? And really, one thing that, that inspired me at this conference was, you know, let's, let's let the students do it, have faith in them, they're, they're the ones that are on there anyways all the time. Let this, you know, maybe at our elementary schools, we let the sixth graders run the school Facebook page, or a school Twitter account, and, and, you know, it's amazing if we have more faith in the set and expectation, they'll kind of self-monitor. And same thing, they, they gave a lot of examples about high schools where they have a Twitter, and, you know, and be like, say, Pascal Pride, or Chiwana Pride, and, and they send, the students just send stuff to that, and it all goes on, and they self-monitor if something's inappropriate, and doesn't take any extra work from an administrator. I'm wondering if you could comment, if you're aware of other, other school districts that you've worked at that have done that, that have kind of loosened those reins, and exercised some faith in our students, and just let them do it for free, and instead of trying to throw this, this type of responsibility onto the administrators?
Sure, most of the districts I've seen have sort of loose guidelines about, you know, the social media use. And one thing that I've seen is, when you're boosting that social media use, the, the website use tends to go down. So if you've got someone designated in each school that, who's supposed to be monitoring the face, the school's Facebook, or the school's web, webpage, and all those pages, you know, you've got someone who's uploading calendars and lunch menus and all that work, you've got that person, well, honestly, uploading to Facebook is much easier and user-friendly, so a lot of times, they'll decrease the staff use time on the website, and move that staff to monitoring and helping with Facebook. I definitely think students, you know, without them necessarily running it, they can post things to that page, they can use hashtags, a lot of students use Instagram, so if you're, if you're using that hashtag, you're kind of automatically posting and creating that student-driven force, and students are sharing. And then what's great is that the district can see those, and they can share what students are, are doing on a much broader basis, too. So if the communications team is monitoring all these school Facebook pages, they can really broaden the, what, what people are seeing. So I think, I think a good combination of letting students have fun and do it, while also having some oversight, but not necessarily adding to a staff person, probably taking a little bit of the work away from, from it on the website.
One, one concern that they had when we were up there and listening to this thing on social media was, what about, especially when kids were posting whatever they wanted, and they weren't, they weren't being monitored before they, it was put on, and he mentioned that there wasn't these, there, there wasn't any official studies done, but most of the schools said that, that cyberbullying actually decreased. And he said, it's actually, he said, really, it's like shining a lot light on cockroaches. You know, kids are already using social media to bully and to intimidate, and when you put it all on the, on one site, and they're there, he said, you'd be amazed how the kids take care of themselves when they see somebody being unkind to somebody else. It's the kids that rally around, are like, that's not right, and, and don't do that. And, and so he said, it just, I, I love the analogy of shining a light on, on the cockroaches. You're bringing it out into the open for everybody to see, and, and some of those things cease, cease, and are no longer there.
That's great. Yeah, I think that's really important. You know, you're teaching, teaching kids skillsets, too, that they're going to be using in the future, you know? What they post on social media, it goes out there.
You can't get it back.
It's red, yeah, you can't get it back, and, and so being thoughtful about that, and really giving kids the tools that they need to do that effectively, I think is important. Glad to hear it was a good conference.
All right, well, we appreciate you sharing with us, Ms. Rogers, and like I said, some of us have already met with you, and some of us are going to meet with you tonight and tomorrow morning, so thanks for the work you do, and we look forward to the further work to improve our district's communications.
Great, thank you, thank you all, thanks for the work you're doing. Appreciate it.
Our regular board meeting will start at 6:30.